Joan. Can you hear me? I don't hear you, Joan. Joan, can you hear me?
Say it again.
Say it again. Not really. Do you have the? Joan? I don't hear you at all.
Say something. Nothing. Can you hear me now?
Hi, Joan.
Can you hear me?
I hear you, Joan. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Yep. Perfect. I just turned my volume up. I think that was down. Can't hear you.
There you go. Now you can hear me.
Now I can hear you.
All right, good. Perfect.
Joan, talk, because I don't think I heard you.
You can't hear me?
It's very low. It might be my thing. Volume is low. Let me see something.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Ah, that's what it was. Okay, no, it wasn't you, Joan.
No, I can't.
It was my volume was, oh.
Can't hear you.
Where the hell did? Can you hear me now, Joan? Can you hear me now?
No.
Joan? She can't hear me.
Leonora, I can hear you.
I think I disconnected.
I can.
I heard Mike. Mike, you could?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hear me?
Yes, ma'am. And I can hear Joan, too.
How about you, Joan?
I can hear you now, Leonora.
Okay, good. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. Hope you had a good holiday.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hi, Mr. Capone. We haven't met yet. I'm Michelle Tiedemann, Director of Special Ad. Hi, Mrs. Tobacco. We've met before. Everybody else knows me, I hope.
We do now.
Michelle? Talk, because Joan just texted me. You can hear Joan?
Can you hear me, Mrs. Minouis?
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can now. I can now.
Okay. Okay.
Mrs. Minouis, I got one of the hot cocoa bombs as a Christmas gift from the No Limits Mac. Oh, my gosh, it was so awesome. But I brought it home and my daughter was looking at it and she says, yeah, and I said, oh, it's one of the bombs. But she said, oh, is it a bath bomb? And I was like, ah, I don't think so, because it came from a restaurant. So we literally were Googling it to make sure we weren't going to throw it in the bathtub, but we poured the hot milk over it. It was awesome. It was great. It was really great.
Yeah, all the workers, all, yeah, all the workers made those. They worked.
Yeah, and they, they looked great. They tasted great. And it was just so much fun. It was the first time I'd ever even seen one.
Cool. That's good. They were popular.
Yeah, they really were. It was great.
I'll bet they made over 4,000.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Really good business for them.
Yeah, that was. It was a great idea. And they were beautiful, too. So nicely packaged.
Yeah, decorated by the employees. Was nice.
Hi, Mel. Happy New Year. Everyone else? Hey, Amy. I feel like I haven't seen everyone. I feel like it's been so long. You're muted, Mel.
There you go. Hi, everybody.
I see if we have everybody here. Okay, Leonora, Jackie, Joan, Frank, John. Mike. Let's see. Is Deb on? Oh, there you are, Deb. Okay, I see you. How about Tom?
He's, he's not coming.
Okay.
He's not feeling well.
Okay.
All right. Um.
So I think.
Quick little announcement, because Chris just.
Oh, right.
Called me. Then he said YouTube is universally having issues this evening, so he's not able to screen the Zoom meeting on that platform right now. So he's streaming in on Facebook. And anybody can access that link if they don't want to be, you know, on the Zoom meeting through the district homepage. He also has a message about that on the district homepage.
Oh, hold on one second. I am getting a call. I don't see Barry on the line, so he might be having an issue. Hold on.
Good evening and Happy New Year, everyone.
Hi, Barry. Right, we're just, you gotta go to the one for the public session, the Zoom. Not the, right, the, yeah, not the executive, the public. It's a Zoom, not the Google Meet. Okay? It's a different email. It should say panelist for the reorganization meeting. Chris Rotolo with a cent. Yeah. If you don't have it, we can resend it.
I'll have Chris. You know what? I think I have it open right here.
You got it?
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll see you there. That's okay. All right, bye. He should be joining in a minute. Okay, I think we have everybody now. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will take public comment limited to agenda items only. Okay, Chris, I, that's, I don't think we can see anybody, correct?
Yes, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. The next item is the announcement of the election results and the new board members. As a result of the November 2020 election, we have joining the board Frank Capone, Harmony Barry Heffernan, and Jacqueline Tobacco, each for a three-year term. At this time, we're now going to administer the oath of office to each new board member. We will start with Mrs. Tobacco. Ready? Okay, you're gonna have to unmute yourself, Jackie. There you go. Okay, so you can repeat after me and you have that in front of you, correct? Or you want to just repeat after me? That's fine. I didn't know if you needed it for reference. Okay, so I state your name.
I, Jacqueline Tobacco.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
The same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, Jacqueline Tobacco.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education.
Prescribed by law for a member of the Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I'm not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to law.
Pursuant to law.
Or disqualified from membership.
Or disqualified from membership.
Due to conviction of any crime or offense.
Due to conviction of any crime or offense.
As listed by law.
As listed by law.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All of the duties of that office.
All of the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Frank Capone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States and this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, Frank Capone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed.
By law.
By law.
For the office of a member of a Board of Education.
For the office of a member of the Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to law.
Pursuant to law.
Or disqualified from membership.
Or disqualified by membership.
Due to conviction of any crime or offense.
Due to conviction of any crime or offense.
As listed by law.
As listed by law.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All of the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Capone.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You.
Congratulations.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes?
I, state your name.
I, Harmony Barry Heffernan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, Harmony Barry Heffernan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of a Board of Education.
For the office of Board of Members, Office of Board of Education, sorry.
That's okay. That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to law.
Pursuant to law.
Or disqualified from membership.
Or disqualified from membership.
Due to conviction of any crime or offense.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Due to conviction of any crime.
Due to, due to conviction of any crime or offense.
As listed by law.
As listed by law.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
And impartially and justly perform.
All of the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mr. Heffernan.
So help me God.
Can I just, just say something really quick? I just want to say congratulations and welcome to Mrs. Tobacco, Mr. Capone, and Mr. Heffernan. Um, you know, you're joining the board at probably the most difficult time in, you know, educational history right now. Um, but we know that you have a lot to offer in terms of your expertise and your passion for the, the students in our school district. So we look forward to working with you and serving the students in our district together.
Thank you very much.
Happy to be here.
I will now take a roll call of the, of the new board. Mrs. Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. Capone.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Jaimo. Mr. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Minouis.
Yeah.
Mrs. Tobacco.
Here.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is calling for nomination and the election of a president for the board for the 2021 year. So at this time.
And I'd like to nominate. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say at this time I will take nominations from the board.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Joan Minouis for president. Did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Excuse me, if I may, pursuant to bylaw 0152, a second is not required.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
The problem.
We will now take a roll call on the nomination of Mrs. Minouis.
Is there any comment section?
If, if I may, Mrs. Doherty, so pursuant to board bylaw 0152, it doesn't specifically say whether it is or isn't comment, but in any board action pursuant to Robert's rules, it would be appropriate for a comment prior to a vote. But I'll just read this for the benefit of all board members, specifically the new ones. And I'll read in pertinent part, any member may place a member's name and nomination. A second is not required. Election for each office being president and vice president will be conducted by a vote. When the nominations for that office are closed, you don't have to formally close it as long as there's no, no one else being nominated. The candidate receiving a majority vote of the members of the board present and constituting a quorum will be elected to office. That will be interpreted as being five votes, need five out of nine board members for the president to be elected, same for vice president. Voting shall take place by verbal roll call vote. After nominations are closed, when more than one person has been nominated, the board will vote on candidates in the order in which they are nominated. And then in the event nobody gets a majority vote, the procedure will continue until someone does. If for some reason someone does not get a majority vote, the executive superintendent will fill of the vacancy for president and vice president. So I'll defer back to Mrs. Doherty, who is chairing the meeting now.
Hearing no other nominations. We will now take a roll call vote on Mrs. Minouis for the office of president.
Amy, if I may, I think a board member had a question or comment, so I was, I think we should be able to ask any questions they may have at all.
Okay.
I just want to say that, you know, over the last two years I've worked with Joan, and that in some cases, I don't find her to be the leader that I expect from the Board of Education. So I'll be voting no on Joan's nomination.
Is there any more comment? Okay, at this time, I will take a roll call vote on the nomination of Mrs. Minouis for president. Mrs. Caminiti.
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
No.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mrs. Minouis?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Okay, the motion garnered five yes votes. Motion carries. Mrs. Minouis will now take over the meeting.
Ready? At this time, I'd like to take nomination for a vice president. Any nomination?
Yeah. Sorry, I'd like to nominate Frank Capone.
I'd like to second it.
There's no second required, respectfully, sir.
I understand, just.
Any other nomination? Okay, roll call votes on.
No comments, Joan?
You can make a comment, Mike.
Okay. I'd like to say to Mr. Capone that I wish him well in this new position, and I'd also like to know his feeling. And I'd also like to know his feeling on keeping politics out of the school system. I mean, I am gonna vote, I am gonna vote on him. So I'd like his thoughts on whether or not he can keep politics out of the school system.
I'd like to respond by saying thank you, Mike. And there are no politics in the school system.
Thanks, sir.
Can I say, can I say something a minute? Frank, I want to tell you being that there's nobody else running. And your, but it looks like to me, you couldn't have a finer teacher than Joan Minuys as a board president.
Thank you, Leon.
A roll call vote?
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations, Frank. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, at this time before we move on to the regular agenda items, um, I'd like to know if anybody on the board has anything else they'd like to say or bring forward?
Um, I'd like to motion to, uh, change the speaking time to five minutes. For public comment. Yeah.
If I may, Mrs. Mrs. Minuys, may I make a comment from a legal standpoint before this is on the floor? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
I said, of course.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, um, Mr. Heffernan and board members, there's no objection to changing the time limit. However, the board would have to essentially amend your policies. And there's a process outlined in your policy manual for doing so. Um, essentially it requires two readings. Um, and so since it wasn't on the agenda this evening, it would likely have to be on the agenda. Um, you have to have the first reading, which is to make the amendment, and then a second meeting. And so I would respectfully recommend, uh, that this item essentially be carried to your next regular meeting. That the policy be revised accordingly. You announce it to the public at that meeting for the first reading, and then at the next meeting, it can be changed accordingly. In the interim, the board has a past practice, I'll use that term, that, you know, pursuant to the discretion of the president. If, if there's a consensus of the board to relax the rules, quote unquote, between now and the policy being formally changed, that's your prerogative, and you can do that in the interim to give the public more time. Uh, but I would just suggest you not act tonight to change it because you would be changing the policy.
So Taylor, what's that policy number again?
I don't have the number in front of me, sir, but I can tell you it's in your, uh, bylaw section, it's in the zero section of your manual online. I can, if you give me a minute or two, I can find it, but it's in, it's probably in the agenda section or public comment section of your bylaws, which are in the zero section of the manual, and it's on the website.
Got it. Mr. Heffernan, um, being that we have the right to extend the public time until the policy is changed, do you have an objection to waiting until it goes through the policy?
I do not.
Okay, so would you like to withdraw your motion?
Um, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And we will put that together with the policy committee as soon as we get it put together. Any other motion? If, if there are any other motion.
No, Joan, I want to bring up something. I want to go back to our committee structure if we can. And if we do go back, I want to put a motion on the table to have the personnel committee, the technology committee, and the committee put back into the committee structure. Can I get a second?
I think we, alright, if we get a second.
Uh, Madam President, I would, the same advice and guidance, you have a policy manual, you have a bylaw section, which sets forth your standing committees. Um, I would just simply recommend that you modify your bylaws into a policy manual in accordance with that format. Um, prior to doing it, that's my. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, Mr. Teller, but three years ago, this very same, um, motion was made at reorg night, and there was no objection.
Respectfully, I wasn't here three years ago, I'll just give you my advice, you can accept it or not, that's all, ma'am, I'm not trying to argue with you.
I don't believe, I don't believe that our committees are listed in policy. Our committees are made by the Board of Education.
Okay, which is.
That's the way it's been, it was done that way three years ago.
Understood, understood.
So do we have a second?
I'll second Mrs. Minuys.
Okay, any clarification? It may just be on my end, but, um, Joan, you're, Ms. Minuys, I'm sorry, your volume is very low. I don't know if it's just my connection or not. Um, and also, Mrs. Caminiti, you broke up a little bit, so I couldn't hear exactly what you were trying to add in terms of committees. If you could just repeat, please.
Yes, I heard.
Personnel.
Can you hear me now, Deb? Can Deb, can you hear me now?
Can you hear Joan?
Yeah, that is a little bit better, thank you.
Deb, I asked a personnel committee again, so it's now personnel of the whole, a personnel committee, a technology committee, and a co-curricular committee, which is our sports and our clubs.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So we haven't voted on the calendar yet in terms of workshops, and I, I don't know, there's a bunch of stuff going back and forth. So we're adding three committees, and just to be clear, as long as I've been here, we never had a personnel committee. I know there has been in the past. Um, I, I know that, uh, I mean, this, we have committees right now, personnel doesn't exist. Um, technology, I'm not sure what that is, because I know that there were, um, future-ready committees at one point in the, in the buildings that were, you know, administration teachers were handling that. And the co-curricular, I, I don't remember that existing. So is it, would it be fair enough to talk about the calendar or this along with the calendar of how many meetings we plan on having a month? Because my view is if you're gonna have like a ton of committees, and then you're gonna have two board meetings, someone has to figure out the frequency of those committee, how they align workshop. I'm sorry, am I breaking up?
We have a motion on the floor to, um, extend three committees, and that's what we're discussing right now.
If I may, Mrs. Minuys, if I can, just for the benefit of the, of the body, I can refer you to your, uh, bylaw 0155. And bylaw 0155, uh, references board committees. Uh, you have essentially ten standing committees. Um, the board, I'll read it in pertinent part, the Board of Education authorizes the creation of board members charged to conduct studies, make recommendations to the board, and act in an advisory capacity. Committees are not authorized to take action on behalf of the board. The board president shall appoint board members to serve a one-year term on the following board standing committees. Curriculum, personnel, facilities, finance, pupil services, special education, negotiations, policy, technology, co-curricular slash sports, and legislative. An ad hoc committee may be created and charged at any time by the president or a majority of the board members present and voting. The president shall appoint members to any committee so created and charged. Members shall serve until the committee is discharged. Committees shall consist of no more than four board members, one of whom may be the president, who serve, who shall serve as an ex officio member on all, all board committees. A member may request or refuse to serve on a committee. Uh, the board reserves a right to meet and work as a committee of the whole in informational discussion and exploratory sessions. No official action shall be taken at these meetings unless so advertised. I'll just note that if you meet as a committee of the whole, it has to be advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, the president shall appoint a chairperson to each committee. Uh, the committee meetings shall be scheduled at the time the committee chairperson desires and requests. Um, and committee meetings shall not be open to the public, except that a majority of the committee or the chairperson may open the meeting to the public or invite persons. Um, and again, committee minutes shall be prepared in a standardized format. So my comment was simply that if you're going to establish a new standing committee, you would essentially be modifying that bylaw, which has a process in your policy manual. If you want to establish, as you referenced, a, three years ago, Mrs. Minuys, a, an ad hoc committee, then that can be done, but ad hoc committees are more temporary in nature for a specific issue. If you're, if Mrs. Caminiti's, uh, uh, motion was to create a new standing committee, all my advice was, was to follow your manual, to go through the process, to change that bylaw, that's all, ma'am.
Well, what I was trying to do is, as the board actually had to get committees away the last time, but being these committees are already in there, then we don't need to vote, I can just assign people to them.
Correct, that's why I wasn't sure if she was changing them or not. If they're already, that's why I read them for the record to make sure we're on the same page, that's all, ma'am.
Okay. So Leon, you don't need to make a motion for that because we can already do that.
Yep.
Okay, that's great, I thought we did, they voted it off last time.
Yep, that's, that's what I thought too, but I guess.
I just looked in your website in real time, so.
Hey, any others before we move on?
I'd like to make a motion, Ms. Minuys.
Go ahead.
As such, I make a motion that the school administrator issues RFPs by January 18, 2021 for legal services, including board attorney, with a response date no later than January 18, 2021. I request that all replies go to the business administrator as well as the president.
I second that.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat the dates, Mr. Capone?
Sure, uh, January 8th, we need the RFPs issued. And we'd like them returned by the 18th. And the replies would go to the business administrator yourself and Mrs. Minuys, the president.
And this is for all legal services?
All legal services, yes.
Okay, just to clarify, because we have a, uh, we have a board attorney and a special education attorney and bond counsel.
So it's, right, legal services for a board attorney.
Board attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so not including special education and bond counsel?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we need a second on that?
I second, I second that.
Discussion. Can everybody hear me? Discussion?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, no discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
No.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
I've obtained.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yeah.
Okay, five affirmative votes, a motion carries.
All right. Um, I'd also like to make a motion to go back to two meetings per month.
I second.
Discussion.
If, if I could, if I could just say, I don't know if that would be, uh, Mrs. Minuys really incorporated in our next voting item, which would be the Board of Education meeting schedule. So right now there is a schedule that's proposed, but that's can be discussed by the board and revised before the board moves it and approves it. So I'm just suggesting that that might be the process we may want to follow here.
All right, then I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to make a motion to take the 12-month Teamster calendar and make it the same as the 12-month employee calendar for the rest of this, this whole year.
Mrs. Minuys, could we perhaps maybe table that for discussion in closed executive session as it pertains to matters of personnel and contract negotiations? Which I don't necessarily, I'm not saying the board can't act on this, but I think that from a code of ethics standpoint, NJSA 18A, colon, 12, dash, 24.1, the board may want to consult with the administration prior to taking action that would affect the collective bargaining agreement, which would directly interfere, I won't say interfere, but affect the day-to-day operation of the school district, which is by statute the responsibility of the superintendent, particularly since we're mid-year, albeit virtually, et cetera. But I think that perhaps it should be discussed in closed session with the administration first.
I was given the impression that the board voted on this calendar.
That's why, Mrs. Minuys, from an attorney-client privilege, a personnel and a contract negotiation standpoint, to the extent your motion affects a, a currently in effect collective bargaining agreement, uh, I, I would, and/or the individual employment rights of other employees in the district, I would suggest that we discuss this, um, the timeline, what may have happened in the past, what you want to do in the future, discuss it in closed session, as this would be an exempt topic from public disclosure under the Open Public Meetings Act. So again, I'm not saying you can't talk about it, not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying that the appropriate place to talk about it would be in closed executive session, and I'm advising that you discuss it with your administration prior to taking action on it as a board of education, that's all, ma'am.
Okay, then I will withdraw that motion and have it as a closed session discussion.
Please stop.
Okay, is there anything else anybody else wants to bring up before we go on to discussing the calendar?
I'd like to make a motion for health insurance.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Health insurance also?
Or what? RFP?
Or the health insurance broker? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, Mr. Capone.
Terrible.
Could you hear me?
Now I can hear you, so.
There you go.
The motion is for an RFP for.
Health insurance.
Health insurance broker?
Correct.
I would just need some clarification on that, and, you know, as far as effective dates and so forth.
If we could get it out by, uh, next Monday, is that okay, the 11th?
Well, I, when you issue an RFP, you have to tell the professionals when the effective date of the appointment would be. Our current broker is appointed through June 30th. Actually, the same would apply for legal services.
Okay, so we can now to currently get some help people to, to interview, is another correct?
Well, we could issue an RFP, but normally you specify what the effective date would be that they would be appointed.
Okay. So currently it's still June 30th, is that right?
We have appointments in place right now till June 30th.
Excuse me, Amy, we have changed, we have changed appointments before the ending date of June 30th.
Correct, yes, I'm just, I'm just stating what we have right now.
Okay, so can we do this by the end?
You know, we would have to, uh, review the contractual obligations as far as notice, but I can, I can, I can do that and include the appropriate date in the RFP.
Okay, great.
Amy, can, can I just ask a question though, because I remember going through this a few years ago. And there was a concern with the insurance broker only because of the negotiation of our rates at this time, like through the spring, is that gonna be affected, like, a date that we change?
Well, that, that's a discussion that we would, that we need to have, you know, effective what date and, and what, what the board's intention is.
Okay.
Yeah, because we did this last year, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we switched the broker in July, right?
No, I think we switched them before the budget was.
No, we actually, it was effective July 1st.
Yeah, we did all the interviews and everything.
Right, the new, the, the, our current broker was appointed for, effective July 1st.
Okay.
But the process took place before that. But there is some, there is some, there's some different ways to approach it, that's what, you know, I, you know, we probably need to have a, a bigger discussion on this so that we know what the board's intention is.
We can go in closed session after this.
But we could still go through with the RFP.
Yes, I just, you know, before anything gets issued, I just need to be clear, and maybe that this would be a topic since it would involve a contract, you know, that we should discuss in executive session.
Can we understand why we want to go to RFP? We just appointed the broker.
I think it'd be good to find out what else is out there as far as brokers and health insurance.
Every hundred million days. Frank?
Frank?
Oh, we got a $25 million health insurance right now, so we can actually save money for all the tax. See what else is out there. I don't think that's a bad thing.
I think doing it every 180 days is not good for business.
I think an RFP is actually good to get something going right now. We'd like to actually start an interview process and find out what we can actually be offered out there.
Okay.
I just, you know, I just want to clarify that the broker, our current broker that was appointed July 1st, did not, was not the broker that went through the renewal process last year. They took over July 1st. So we've technically only had this broker for a little over six months.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong, the RFP is just bringing them in for an interview to see what's out there correctly.
An RFP asks professionals to propose, correct?
If we can do it by March 1st, that'd be great.
Okay, well, I think, you know, we can discuss this more in executive session as far as timeline. But we have a motion by Mr. Capone. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Mrs. Tobacco?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin? Mr. Donlin?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. No, Amy.
Okay. Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Mrs. Menewies?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the calendar.
I have a question. What calendar is considered the attachment? Because I could not find the attachment for the calendar. So what calendar is attached to this agenda, please?
That is a calendar that was just based off of the meetings from last year. You know, it basically occurred the third Wednesday of the month and made that. So it mirrored pretty much exactly what this year was with a couple of date changes because, you know, different days of the month.
Okay. I know that Joan, you put a calendar out there because you sent it to all of us. And if we're going to vote on the calendar, I want a motion for that calendar. So.
Calendar, Leonora?
Excuse me?
Did you see Mike's calendar?
Yes, I did, but he just changed the days. You had Wednesdays, he made them Tuesdays. You had Tuesdays. He made them one, and he made, and once again, wait, can I just say something? Wait, let me finish, Mike, and I'll listen to whatever you say. You know, every year I say the same thing. I think we should have two dates on the calendar. It's harder to get us together. It's easy to say no to a date. Later on, we could always cancel. I think in July, we need two dates. I think in November and December, we need the dates down. I have no problem with canceling dates, but when you try to add them in in the last minute, we're all busy. We all have other places. We sit on other boards. It's very hard for us to get together. Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, the only thing I wanted to say was, I went from, the Joan's calendar was going from Wednesday to Tuesday. And my calendar is going from Tuesday to Wednesday, the following week. And the reason I bring that up is because if something happens on Wednesday during a workshop, if we approve workshops, then the administration only has two days to get the information together because by Sunday, they've got to post the agenda for a Tuesday. So if we if we go to a meeting or a workshop on a Tuesday, then they've got Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, which gives them a little bit more time. And they post the schedule on Monday. So in fact, they have four days of four working days to get whatever information we need for that meeting. That's the only reason, because we're squishing, we're making them do things too fast. We might not get the information and have it in time for the voting meeting. That's the only reason I went Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, I understand. I think when we have committee meetings going again, I think things are going to work a lot smoother because I think it won't be, and with the workshop, us bringing it to the workshop, I think we're going to be, it's going to be a lot different. That, so I still make the motion, I prefer the calendar that Joan brought forth. And on the bottom, like she had certain things, I just think it's a better way.
Are we having further discussion on this, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we're moving back to two meetings per month, which is fine, I'm not opposed to that. I actually did like Mike's calendar better for the reasons that he just proposed, only because it does give the administration that additional cushion of time. And there's been quite a few times, quite frankly, especially during preparation of the budget and other things that have popped up, that we asked them for a lot of data or to generate more reports. And then on top of their daily duties of trying to actually run the schools during the day, it could, you know, actually benefit them in terms of the product that they would be able to turn around and give us if we give them that additional time. So I only think that Mike's calendar and adjusting the day like that actually makes more sense.
Can I ask a question? Nice question. Um, sorry, so, um, just from my own knowledge, so you guys have been doing one meeting, a combined workshop and voting meeting. So to Mike Donlin's point, what, how was it working then? And why would it be, would it be giving us some additional time, or how was it working prior? But now we're worried about not having enough time?
Well, what I think what I was referring to is before, when we went to one meeting per month, in between those meetings, we were having our individual committee meetings. And then moving forward, and then at the meeting, we would, everything would be reported back, and then we'd be voting right there at the same meeting. What we're talking about now is going to a workshop model, although we're going to still continue to have committee meetings. We're not moving back to operating as committee by the whole. In the additional time period, when you're reporting on what's happening with your committee, and you're going to see this, especially during the preparation of the budget for next year, there's going to be a lot of sort of moving parts and things that we're going to be asking the administration to come back with in terms of further information. And so it's just to give them a little bit more of a cushion of time to be able to generate that information for the next meeting, which would then be the voting meeting. Because of the way that you have to, excuse me, the way you have to sunshine the notice for the agendas and stuff, it just gives them that little additional time.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I just was confused because if you were having a workshop and a voting at the same date, then how did you ever get the information back or have enough time? Or was it a month lapsed? Were you having a workshop and then a month later, you were voting on what was in work?
No, not that, not a month lapsed, but that you were basically operating within your committee structures outside of the budget process. You were operating within the committee structures and then bringing it to the voting meeting.
Okay, and so in this model, and again.
We're still going to be.
You have a week in between, Jackie. Workshop one week.
We can't hear you, John, at all.
John, I think you're on mute.
No, I'm going to fix my microphone. Sorry.
Did somebody disconnect there?
Yeah, something like that just happened.
I think he said he was fixing his microphone.
You're on, Joan. Yep.
Is Chris, is Chris still working on this?
Is John the only one who's not there, John?
I see John.
I can see John.
I see a schedule. I don't know what that is. Maybe I have to rejoin.
You're here, you're, you're here.
Yeah, for me.
I don't see anybody.
Everybody's here. Well. Did you open, you know what, along the bottom, do you have like icons? Press the one that looks like a little camera. It says zoom. You might have clicked something else and clicked out of it. Now you have to click that little button. It's blue with the little white, looks like movie camera.
I got you, yeah, I got you, okay.
Can I just say one thing about the calendar? My only concern with it is the workshop in June is the week where we usually have the graduations and the promotion ceremonies. And we're so hoping that we can do them in person, but they haven't been scheduled yet. So we want to keep that week open because that's that last week of school for staff and students. We really can't go to the next week, and we don't want to graduate people a week before they leave school. So could we move the workshop up to like the week of the, I don't know, was it the seventh or eighth or something like that? That week in June that's up there, just move it that far ahead so we have that week clear so that we can, you know, hopefully do our promotions and graduation ceremonies in there? Well, the calendar that Mr. Donlin said caused the workshop on June 8th. And. And Mrs. Menewies about it. I don't know if Mrs. Menewies saw it, I guess not, but, um, it would cause a problem.
Leave it the same, and if we need to move it, we'll move it closer, too. Because we don't know what's going to happen. If it's going to be, if we're going to try, if we have to do our graduations earlier like we have in the past, or we're going to be doing them later. I truly hope we have graduations. I'm counting on it. But I just think that we could fix that date, and you had emailed me that along. We could always fix that date as we get to June. Because who knows what June's going to bring, and we might have to change it again.
But I just don't have. I just thought having the workshop a week earlier wouldn't be harmful. There's really not a lot to discuss in June. We're pretty much just getting through things, but.
So maybe there won't be a workshop in June. Maybe we'll just cancel it. We don't need it.
It's up to you guys. Just brought it up as a operational thing.
Any other discussions? I didn't really get to hear what John said because he was in and out. I would like to hear if he could repeat what he was saying.
I think my mic is busted. Can you hear me now? Probably not.
A little in and out.
A little bit, but it's like that at every meeting. Okay, I guess not. Okay, so what do we want to do?
I would like to vote on the calendar that you proposed, Joan. That's my opinion.
All right, then we're going to need a second if that's the case.
I'll second it, John.
Okay, discussion. Wait, we just had one. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes, to the calendar that Joan proposed with two meetings a month, a workshop and a voting meeting. Workshops on Wednesdays, voting meetings on Tuesdays.
Mr. Donlin?
And all. No.
No?
No.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No, for the reasons I stated before.
Mr. Capone?
I say yes because it looks like Mike's calendar is missing both dates in July and only one voting meeting session, November and December, and that's not what I'm for, so yes to this.
Mrs. Menewies? Okay, with five votes, the motion carries. Mrs. Menewies' version of the calendar, which will, we will utilize to post the board meeting schedule.
Now we need, we need to make a vote on number 11 for finance. Under finance, could we explain this to the new board members? What this is all about?
I could. Um, and I think I explained a little bit to them, I think, when maybe when we met. We were cited for disproportionality in suspensions. And so we have to come up with a plan to address this. This year, we're fine. There's no issue, but it's still, it was from like 2017, 18, I think, and prior. So part of the plan we would like to do is to get a, to get a consultant in to help us with looking into the issue and trying to help us, you know, develop ways to address it. We're required to, we have to spend 15% of our IDEA money on that. So this item on the agenda is just a request for us to be able to put out a competitive contracting bid for a consultant. Then, if you vote on that yes, and we put out the bid and we choose someone, you will then have the opportunity to vote on whether that person gets hired ultimately or not.
Is, can I ask a question? We are in discussion. This has confused me since I heard about it the first time. Because you're talking about diversity, and then you're talking about using IDEA money. And is it issue of a special needs child being suspended, or is it an issue of?
It was the issue of us black students with IEPs being suspended, which is a very small population we have. So that's the population that, you know, a larger percentage of that poor population than the state gives you a limit on was, but it's much, it's a much more complicated formula that they use. So that's one of the reasons we need a consultant, because we, the state doesn't help you determine what happened. They just say this happens. So we need a consultant that does this to come in and say, listen, this is where you went wrong. This is where in the formula that you went wrong. And this is how you can correct that. So it is a requirement. We don't have a choice. We have to spend that money from the IDEA funds, which means that money for elsewhere from our budget went into some special ed. That that money is usually used for out-of-district replacements that are already in effect. We still have to pay them. So, you know, that really, even though it says it's coming in IDEA funds, it comes out of our, another place in our budget also, because we have to replace those funds that aren't going into special ed. So special ed isn't getting less funds. It's just where those funds are coming from now for that 15%. Is that clear? I think I didn't say clearly.
It's a little bit confusing, but I also, and again, this is probably past business, but is, are we able to address this as a matter of a behavior issue? Is it a behaviorist that comes in and finds out why we had to go to suspension? Or is it strictly a racial issue? Because I think that's very confusing.
Well, it's both, because when we address it, it doesn't have to address just that issue. You can address behaviors. You can, you know, address equity. You can address all different types of things with the funds. But you do have to figure out where the issue was and how to address that specific issue with the portion of the funds. But the funds can be used in the area of equity and discipline, you know, that in that entire area.
Okay, so I have one more question. So is this, when you say we have to find out what happened, so is this specifically money just to address that one student thing, or this?
We don't know how many students it was, you know, it was a small percentage of students. Yeah, so no, this money will help us, one, determine where the issue was, you know, and also what a good plan is for attacking this issue. Because this is supposed to be a three-year project. project. Um, this year we're great, so we're hoping that they will, you know, cut some years off, maybe two, but hopefully at least one. Um, so we won't have to do this for three years, but um, we have to spend that money this year. And so we need to get a plan. We had a plan that really, we were trying to hire just three, you know, people, employees to come in and help with us with this. And nobody has the knowledge on how to do this. This is, you know, this is something unique, I guess, um, for this type of disproportionality. Usually the disproportionality is, I think, having too many students classified um, out of, for, in certain segments, whether, you know, they be black students or, you know, students of color, whatever. It's, those are the um, those are the usual ones, but to have it because of discipline, you know, so we were having trouble hiring someone. So we thought that, listen, we, we really need a little bit of direction here. If we're going to spend this much money, um, we have to make sure that what we're doing is right and it's going to really help the districts. And um, to get someone who knows what they're doing to come in and really point us in the right direction and give us some guidance is the way to go.
Okay, so with this. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, is this money all coming from a grant?
This, this is part of our IDEA funds that we get every year. So we have to use 15% of the funds for this purpose. But it can be used to address the problem, but it also can be used on a whole, you know, litany of, of equity for special needs students and, you know, for all the different sub-populations that they identify. Um, it can be used for any of them. So it's really something that's going to benefit a lot of students in our district, not just a small population, but it will benefit them also.
Okay, I just. Sorry, I just want, I just want to say, I mean, I'm not sure where, how far you are in the process, but I just want to say I would really like to see this money go towards um, more of a discipline and behavior issue than distinguishing between race because with this, with a child with special needs that's being suspended, there are so many other issues at play, including their home situation, including, you know, suspension doesn't always, uh, you know, it could exacerbate behaviors instead of, uh, you know, helping them. So I'd really like to see this go out to Hefner, if you have Michelle Tiedemann involved in, you know, trying to get some.
She's definitely involved in this. Mrs. has done all the trainings for it. She's, um, she's a lead on this.
Great.
Okay. And, and you know, if we are able to do this, this bid, when we choose someone, we can have that person come in and, and speak to the board before, you know, they determine if they want to appoint them to make sure that that person is, you know, headed in the right direction that the board wants them to go in.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
This is just for us to go out to bid. It's not, we're not being bound by anything. All right?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? On this issue? Hearing none? Roll call vote?
I don't think Mrs. Menewes, anyone moved it and seconded it.
I'll second it.
I'll make a second question. Mike made the first, I guess.
Okay. So we did discussion. So roll call, Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
I'm just going to say no because I feel like all of our children should be treated equally across the board. So I'm a no on that. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
This is only for the RFP, correct? It's not voting on it to proceed.
It's, it's, the motion is to approve the district to use the competitive contracting process, right, to, to obtain proposals for this work.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. Menewes? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, before we go to public comment, I would just like to ask all board members to please email me by Friday on any of the committees that you think you would like to be on so I can consider and get our committees up and going. And I just want to remind everybody that there is a pick-me-day-morning. So I'd really like to have that committee set and ready to go by Tuesday morning. So if you could just email me with your choices and then I can consider it and we can get our committees up and going.
Mrs. Menewes, I also want to mention that Mr. Mercantani had reached out to me today uh, asking about the possibility of a shared services meeting on Monday, the 11th. So I responded that I did not know who the representatives would be or if that would be a good date. So I told him we were having our meeting tonight.
Okay. I guess I would go ahead and make the meeting and I'll put the committee together and we'll know by Friday who's on it.
Okay. Okay.
All righty. With all that done, I guess we are up to the public comment portion.
Do you have a hand raised? Mrs. Menewes? Uh, we're going to bring in Albert Miller.
Good evening. Al Miller, 16 hours Court House, New Jersey. Good evening, board members and administration, and happy School Board Appreciation Month. I'm Al Miller, president of the Monmouth County School Boards Association. The county officers and myself are trying to hop into as many local school board meetings as possible this year to wish you a happy School Board Appreciation Month and to let you know how the county School Board Association is doing. I first want to offer our congratulations to your new and returning board members. Also, congratulations to your new president and vice president, and I wish your entire board success in 2021. We also want to thank all your staff, administration, and board members for all your hard work and dedication to your students and district during this current pandemic. We know how hard it's been on everyone. We're asking if you haven't done so already, that you please appoint a representative to the Monmouth County School Boards Association to represent your district. And our current 2021 meeting schedule is February 11th. We're going to have a joint meeting with Ocean virtually at 7:00 PM, and the topic will be the superintendent evaluations. March 2nd, we're still trying to do our eighth grade dialogue, which we're going to try to do virtually. We'll have more information to come very shortly. And May 13th is going to be a very big meeting for us. Um, we're going to have legislators visiting us virtually. We're going to do our board member awards and we have all our county officer elections. The presidents will be president, vice president, vice president of legislation, board of directors delegate, and board of directors alternate. The call for offices is going to come out in the next few months. So we asked, uh, if you want to run, please consider um, running for one of these positions. Uh, finally, we just want to wish you and your family and your staff a safe, happy, and healthy 2021, and we hope to see you at one of our meetings this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Albert. Anybody else? Mr. Rotolo?
I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time, Mrs. Menewes. Actually, we did have one that just went up, a couple. Bring in Dr. Pagliarola.
Hello, how are you? Um, I was wondering if I could ask a general question if a board.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you please state your full name and uh,
Sure.
residence for the record, please?
Dr. Suzanne Pagliarola. I'm at 55 Appleton Avenue. Um, and I.
Thank you.
I wanted to see if you, if board members were allowed to be on the board if they have a lawsuit open against Middletown Board of Ed?
From, from, I'll tell you from what I understand from New Jersey school boards is that if it's personal um, and it doesn't involve any dollars, that yes, they can.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know, I don't know that anybody really does have a lawsuit against us.
Okay, I think that there, there, it is public knowledge right now, but I'll look into it more. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling.
Okay, next we have Mithra Bussler.
Yes, hello. Uh, this is Mithra Bussler. I'm a Middletown resident. And this question is directed towards Ms. Tobacco. Um, so.
Yes, it's back to all your questions toward the board president.
Okay, then this is uh, directed towards the board president, Ms. Menewes. So during the Board of Ed election and post-election period, um, Ms. Tobacco made numerous false or evidence-free claims about coronavirus or social media, on social media. And some of these included, to the best of my knowledge, the claims that the coronavirus is not dangerous to children, that children do not spread it. They're not vectors. And I quote, that it was created in a Chinese lab, that the flu kills more people, that the vaccines currently being deployed are untested, that they alter your DNA, and that they won't keep the virus from spreading. She's also been an outspoken opponent on social media of mask mandates, a measure which was identified by the, the head of the CDC, Dr. Redfield, as the single most important weapon in spreading, in fighting the spread of COVID. So uh, we're in the midst of the worst healthcare crisis in over a century. It's already claimed to date about 375,000 American lives and most of us have, have lost loved, loved ones. We've lost livelihoods. We've lost all sorts of things. Our path to a return to a normal life and to safety for our children and school employees required, and all of us requires that we achieve herd immunity as soon as possible. And the only safe way to do this is through vaccination. Now, as a private citizen, your opinions are your own, but once you become a Board of Ed member, your opinions carry weight. They resonate through the community and Ms. Tobacco's anti-mask, anti-vaccine, and generally scientifically illiterate claims about coronavirus are only going to undermine this vital health policy objective. So more generally, they're, they're going to undercut our, undermine our children's respect for medical and scientific expertise and consensus.
How many minutes does he get to speak?
I've got about 30 more seconds. I'm going to use them. So with this in mind, will you and the two?
Mr. Taylor, can we, can, can we ask if this is essentially necessary to cast opinion about a current sitting board member?
So the, um, pursuant to, to Mrs. Tobacco's question, the timeframe, I believe, is three minutes per speaker. Uh, I believe Mr. Hefferman earlier wanted to extend it to five minutes, and I said that I would defer to the leadership and the consensus of the board as to what you wanted to do. Um, I typically act upon the direction of the uh, president, whether to keep time. I presume that Mrs. Doherty was keeping time. So I wasn't keeping time, ma'am, respectfully. Mr. Capone, to your question, um, the, during public comment, the public can comment on wherever they want. They can comment on outer space, on Middletown, on United States, et cetera, within their five minutes. Um, subject to, as Mrs. Menewes indicated, directing their comments to the board. Um, and of course, if they get out of line and disrupt the meeting, et cetera, there are procedures up to and including calling the police to have them removed. Um, but they could pretty much talk about whatever they want to.
Okay, according to my stopwatch, he has about a minute left. So let's let him finish up and we'll move, you know, we'll move to next caller.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, I'm not quite sure when you cut me off, so I'll just back up a sentence or two. Basically, as a private citizen, your opinions are your own. But as a Board of Ed member, your anti-mask, anti-vaccine, and generally scientifically illiterate claims about coronavirus are only going to undermine what is the central healthcare policy objective, getting us back safe to normal life. And more generally, they're going to undermine our children's respect for medical and scientific expertise and consensus. So with this in mind, will you, and I direct this to indirectly, I suppose, to Ms. Tobacco and to her two newly elected running mates, will you hereby commit to leaving the medical and healthcare commentary and crucially, our district's medical policy decisions to healthcare experts? Not to YouTube videos.
I, I understand your concerns and we've listened to you out, but they do not have to answer that question.
Okay, next we have Lisa Baker.
Hello? Hi. Can you hear me?
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, my name's Lisa Baker. I'm the board rep at New Monmouth School, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I wanted to say that I wish everybody the best in this next year. I know that I appreciate all the work that everybody does. Jaclyn, I had a personal run-in with you on Facebook in which you blocked me, but I look forward to working with you and seeing what you have to say. But um, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm astonished. But you can't block us now and our voices will be heard as far as what people think in this town. But I also wanted to know about this bus refund. Is that going to be direct deposited to me or is that going to be a check? I just want to look out for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Kelly. I don't have a last name, so hopefully we can get that uh, from, from them.
Hello, my name is Kelly. I own 237 King Fisher Drive, Middletown. Wanted to say congratulations to the new board members. I look forward to seeing what you can do um, as far as um, what was being said before, as far as medical uh, information. I, I know personally, my physician, since I, since 1995, has advised not to take the vaccine. Not yet. It is not tested. It, it's, it's just not safe at this point. So, you know, I, I'm going to put my opinion out there. Um, and I think that, you know, board members are allowed to have their opinions. We've had board members with their opinions. It's, you know, when we start to put politics into the classroom and start to try to mold the minds of the children instead of uh, letting them come up with their own decisions. That's where there's a problem. Thank you.
Kelly.
Okay, next is Vera Pysekic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Um, I just wanted to take a second to welcome the new board members um, to the, to the team. I really look forward to seeing everybody's unique input and wish everybody the best and happy new year. Thank you for putting in all of this volunteer time. It's, it, it can be a thankful job, but just let it be known that many of us really, really appreciate the work that you guys put in. Might not agree with everything, but we definitely appreciate all the effort that you all put in on this as a volunteer position. Thank you.
Happy new year, Vera.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Michelle Collins.
Hi, it's Michelle Collins, 125 Jumping Brook Road, Lynn Croft. I was just wondering why Joan is advising the candidates not to answer the question about going by scientific data and medical professionals regarding COVID? Wouldn't that be what we all want for our children and our staff?
I advise because they're, they're just getting sworn in. I think that they have to be able to be updated on everything and how it's working in the system. I, you know what? People have their personal opinions, but when they're board members, they represent the entire district. I feel that we need to give them a chance to come in and find out how things are working, why decisions are made the way they're made. And, and going back in the past, you guys never even got answers. We're trying to answer you, but when it's a personal attack like that, I think that they shouldn't answer it. It's just my personal opinion.
Okay, next is Josie Katz.
Hi, I just have a question. Being that I'm seeing all these posts on Facebooks from the board members, the, some of the new elected board members, I just want to know if we should be looking forward to being able to read some of your posts um, that include board minutes so that we can follow and if you're going to allow us to follow you so on Facebook and any of your social media so we can stay up to date on what's happening during the board meetings?
Well, personally, our board meetings are videoed and you're welcome to go back and watch the um, videos online. You could get them on the MiddletownK12.org and you'll hear exactly what's going on in our board meeting. Or you can log in like you did tonight and watch them.
I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time, Ms. Menues.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no one else left to question, we need to have a motion to go into executive session. For, I'm assuming Mrs. Walker, it's matters of personnel?
Yes. And contracts, I believe you were going to, were you going to talk about the contracts?
Personnel and contract issues regarding Team Show's contract, I believe it was.
Make the motion.
Again.
This is Minus. Could we just add that minutes will be taken and released to the public if and when the need for confidentiality no longer exists, and action may be taken by the board whenever we convene in a public session.
Are we going to be able to get back on to public session to end the meeting? The last time it wasn't possible.
Yes, this room will remain open until you come back out and then can conclude.
I'm sorry, was the second by Mr. Capone?
Yes, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. You wanted a roll call, Mrs. Menues?
Oh, we could do all in favor.
Right.
Aye.
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 Extension. Okay. The link should be on everybody's email to get into executive session.
Just remember to close out this link, okay? Close this out, we can go back into it later. Don't leave it open, because everybody will hear everything you're saying, and it's closed session. So close it out, open the new one, okay?
So hit leave at the bottom right.
At the bottom right.
Okay, we all here?
I'm here.
Alrighty, I would like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Have a good night everybody, we'll see you on the 14th.
Goodnight.